Good afternoon. I will call to order the October 30th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Cronzer, Magrino, Slack, Sweezy, Lukey Pierre, Briland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business today is to approve the actions from the October 16th meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we will sort through the agenda. We'll determine which items we will discuss and which will be considered on consent. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. So, starting at the top, Item 1 is a drainage and utility easement vacation. That's in the vicinity of Gerard Avenue North. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 1? See, no one will put that on consent. Item 2 is a communication exchange facility at 1208 Bryant Avenue North. That's a conditional use permit for a building addition there. I know Commissioner Cronzer had some questions about the screening wall, so we'll discuss Item 2 briefly. Item 3 is at 1803 North Second Street. Several applications related to a dynamic sign. We'll discuss Item 3 if anyone is here for that. Item 4 is at 1120 West Broadway. That is a rezoning and conditional use permit. We'll also discuss Item 4 if anyone is here for that. Item 5 is a cultural wellness center at 2313 13th Avenue South. Two applications for the cultural wellness center. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 5? See, no one will put Item 5 on consent. Finally, Item 6 is a zoning code text amendment related to pet boarding and animal shelters. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 6? See, no one will put that on consent. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 1, 5, and 6 will be considered on consent, and we will discuss Items 2, 3, and 4. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our Committee of the Whole consent agenda. And Vice President Slack, do you have an update for us?
Thank you, President Brown. At the October 19, 2017 Committee of the Whole, we heard three items. The first was a land sale at 2822 Emerson Avenue North. Item number 2 was a land sale at 3110 Upton Avenue North. And item number 3 was green on 4th Apartments, 2901 4th Street Southeast. The recommended motion was to approve the staff report that each of those items was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right. I'll take that as a motion to find that those items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's Items 1, 5, and 6. Is there anyone here for any of those items? See, no one. I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. Our first item for discussion is Item 2 at 1208 Bryant Avenue North. Staff is Ms. Rouse. Commissioner Cronzer, I know you had a question about the screening wall there, so perhaps we could just focus the presentation on that.
This is a conditional use permit for a communication exchange facility located at 1208 Bryant Avenue. You can see here where the larger site is located, along Plymouth Avenue and vacated Bryant Avenue North. Aerial image showing the existing facility that's going to be expanded upon. And so what they're proposing is a 372-square-foot addition to the existing facility, and then a new backup generator with a screening fence that will be nine feet 10 inches tall, made of metal panel. So here, you can see where that screening fence is currently proposed. It's the red line there. So it'll go to 13 feet 4 inches on the western side, cover the entire northern end of the generator, and then on the eastern side, it'll go to a depth of about 6 foot 8 inches. You can see the larger site plan. So here's a Google Street View image showing the existing facility, circled there in red, and the arrow is showing the sightline from where that image would be taken, linking at the generator. So the applicant had mentioned that they designed the screening fence just to screen it from the public right-of-way, not from the existing building. And here is the proposed metal panel screening fence. While it does say 7 foot 6 inches, that was the original. When they designed the generator, they realized they would need a taller screening fence, so it is 9 foot 10 inches now. You can see the existing building, east facade, north facade, where the addition will occur, west facade. And just a quick rundown, we, staff determined that the requested meet the CUP criteria, and we recommend approval with these three conditions. And the applicants are okay with these conditions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Cronzer.
Did the applicant provide any reason, functionally, of why it's not the same on both sides, the screening on the east versus the west?
I did ask that of the applicants. They mentioned that they only went partway down on the eastern side because it wouldn't be visible from the street, and so it wasn't necessary.
All right. Any other questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. And I don't know if there's anything the applicant would like to add. So you can come to the microphone and state your name and address, if there's anyone here on behalf of the applicant. Yeah, please come up to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record.
So I'm Matt Schwartz with Parallel Technologies. We are working on behalf of Comcast Communications for this facility. I don't really have anything to add, I guess. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. As noted before, the wall is just intended to screen from the public right-of-way, is really the reason why it's designed the way it is.
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can see if anyone else would like to speak on this item. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on Item 2? See, no one. I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we just have the one application before us, the conditional use permit. Commissioner Cronzer.
I'll move staff recommendation A to approve the conditional use permit with the three stated conditions and adding a fourth. That fourth, that the middle screening on the east side shall match the length of the middle screen on the west side at 13 feet 4 inches.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a quick note that this, if you're on the Plymouth Avenue sidewalk, this metal screen on the east side will not actually screen the generator. So although Google View is, Google Street View is awesome, I use it every day, it doesn't always represent what the full breadth of the right-of-way is and what's able to be seen and not seen.
All right. Thank you. And just wanted to make sure, is the applicant generally comfortable with that? I see them nodding, so, yeah. Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Briland?
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. Our next item of business is Item 3, 1803 North Second Street. Staff is Ms. Wallace.
Good evening, Commissioners. The application here is for a conditional use permit and two variances to allow a dynamic sign at 1803 North Second Street. The site is occupied by Northern Metals Recycling. There are three buildings on the site. One of the buildings at the corner of Washington Avenue North and 18th Avenue North is currently being reconstructed after being destroyed by fire. So the applicant has proposed three signs for that building. Here's a photo of the site. This is a photo of the building. It's currently under construction. So the applicant has proposed two metal signs on the south elevation that conform with the requirements of the zoning code for signage in industrial districts. They have also proposed a dynamic sign on the west facade facing Washington Avenue North and Interstate 94. The dynamic sign they propose exceeds both the maximum size and maximum height of dynamic signs, so they are applying for variances. Dynamic signs are allowed to be 32 square feet and 14 feet above grade, and the sign they have proposed is 60 square feet and 21 feet 3 inches above grade. So here is a signage plan showing their proposed metal wall signs on the south elevation and the proposed dynamic sign on the west. And here are a couple of sign renderings. So they proposed that the dynamic sign would show current recycling rates and other business needs. And then the signs on the south would be the name of the organization and then the directions to access the measurement scale. So staff finds that the application for a conditional use permit to allow a dynamic sign is appropriate. I-2 district is appropriate for uses that might be objectionable in other areas. However, staff finds that the proposal for a 60-square-foot sign that's 21 feet above grade would be excessive for the area. One of the reasons that the applicant had cited as requesting the variances was visibility to commuters, since the western elevation is visible from Interstate 94. Staff finds that there would be sign clutter in the area. There's a dynamic sign just half a block north at the intersection of West Broadway and Washington Avenue North. There are two static billboards nearby and a lot of wall signs in the area, in addition to multiple wall signs and a pole sign already on the site on other buildings. So staff has recommended approval of the conditional use permit to allow the dynamic sign, but has recommended denial of the variances to increase the size and height. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Lindsay, maybe you could help me understand. What would they be allowed in terms of freestanding signs on the site? Or are they kind of using up all of their available signage?
So there is already a freestanding sign that faces North Second Street. They would be allowed quite a bit of just regular wall signs that would have more permissible requirements in terms of height and area. So it's one foot per, one foot of square footage per linear building, linear building wall. So the west elevation has 2, I think, 280 linear feet. So they would be allowed 280 feet of wall signs that can be up to 28 feet in height for a static sign.
All right. Any other questions? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. So if someone is here on behalf of the applicant, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Sean Ammon. I'm here on behalf of Northern Metal, my customer behind me here. And this is for 1803. So I just wanted, I mean, you did a good job here. I just want to bring up that they do have a very large building, and the sign was just so small up there. We, and we're not stuck on stone at 60 either. That's just somewhere where we started to see if we could get something a little bit bigger than 32 square feet. So like Lindsay mentioned, they could go up to 280 square feet of signage on that wall, and we're only asking for 60, or, you know, around there, of dynamic. You know, instead of plastering graffiti all over their brand-new building, they just spent money on updating in the city of Minneapolis here. The sign is, can accommodate all the restrictions, brightness, light sensors. Every 60 seconds, the ad can change, you know, so everything else is, you know, within the rules of your guys' books, so. And like I said, 60 is just kind of where we started out. In St. Cloud, we put up a sign for Northern Metal that was 6 by 10, and it works really well for them. So that's where we figured we'd kind of start out. But I mean, it's up for discussion if we can, you know, what we can kind of get my customer, that'll work for them in a good way.
All right. Are there any questions? I should see if there are any questions of you just yet. Doesn't look like there are, so we can move on to any other speakers. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Rodal. I work for Northern Metal Recycling, 1803 North Second Street. I just wanted to tell you kind of why we wanted the sign. And we are building a new building and taking the opportunity to upgrade the rest of the facility at the same time. We've invested in landscaping and just around the facility. We added all-new landscaping around the whole new facility, fencing, going to paint the fence, the new building. And so this kind of just fit into our investment in the community and in our business. And so that's why we're looking for a nice sign to be able to advertise our business and what we do, and be able to tell the public what the cost of changing commodities are. And then I just brought some pictures of Lindsay had spoken to, and I don't know if you guys have ever seen the signs in that area. And this is the sign that she's talking about that's on 23rd and Washington Avenue. And then what I think they don't want us to do is have a whole bunch of signage in that area, and we don't want to clutter up the side of our, and I can give these to you guys to look at, clutter up the side of our building like...
Actually, if you set those on the overhead, we can see them right next to you there.
I don't even know how to...
Turn that 90 degrees there.
So this is on the, this is on the corner, standing on the corner of Washington and Broadway. And that is BJ's. That is on the corner with a whole bunch of signage. And then as you move towards our facility, there really is no signing. There's buildings, apartment buildings, things like that. And then there's a big open space between our building and the next building. And that's where our building comes in. And those pictures are standing on the corner of West Broadway. And so we would like to advertise to the people at that intersection and the people going down that street. And this is directly across, excuse me, directly across the street from BJ's on top of, you know, where you can see the large dynamic sign. And this is the other side of it coming down Washington Avenue.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioners, are there any questions of the speaker? If there are none, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on Item 3? If there is no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Lukey Pierre.
I had a question for staff. I was looking at this and wondering what impact the primary versus secondary building walls had on any of the signage decisions? Because it seems as though this isn't a primary building wall, since the main entrance is off of Second, right?
Sure. So it is, it does face a public street, so it would be defined as a primary building wall.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? And we have three applications before us. One, Item A for the conditional use permit for the dynamic sign, and then two variances related to the height and area of that sign. Commissioner Rockwell.
Sorry, I've got one more quick question for staff. Is there, so the sign faces Washington, correct?
Correct.
And is there a required fence between the building and Washington, or no?
No.
No, so there's no fence between the building and Washington?
No.
Okay. So regardless of the height of the sign, one would be able to see it from Washington Avenue?
Yes. I believe there, perhaps, I think the rendering here, this was the old building.
Oh, okay, that's good.
So this is taken from Google.
Great. I have a very Xeroxed copy, so it's unclear. Cool, thank you.
Sir, you're welcome.
All right. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? All right. We have a motion and a second to move staff recommendations for Items A, B, and C, that is to approve Item A, the conditional use permit, deny the variance for maximum height, and deny the variance for maximum area of the dynamic sign. Any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I'll just say quickly, you know, I think that the sign will, well, the sign will be able to be seen by passersby on Washington. And, you know, I think we've had a number of sign discussions recently, so I thought I'd just touch on that briefly. I think there is a difference between the dynamic signs and the static signs, static, like not backlit signs, in terms of their impact on community and how far they can be seen and how bright they are. I was telling Commissioner Briland before the meeting that, you know, I was looking at signs on the Viking Stadium from an airplane the other day, and they were really, really bright from the air. So, you know, you've got opportunity, Northern Metal has, Metal has opportunity to put a static sign up at the higher level, and I think that it's appropriate to have a dynamic sign lower and smaller.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to follow staff recommendation on all three items. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bignan?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Briland?
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item 3. Next item for discussion is Item 4, 1120 West Broadway. Staff is Ms. Wallace again.
Chair Brown, I'll be recusing myself for my Item 4.
Oh, yes, thanks. Thanks for reminding of that. Commissioner Lukey Pierre is recusing herself.
This project is located at 1120 West Broadway in North Minneapolis, and it's currently occupied by a one-story commercial building. The building has legally non-conforming rights to operate as a gas station, car wash, and convenience store. This project recently went through the PDR process for some significant improvements of the interior and exterior of the building, including new surfacing materials of the parking lot, new screening, landscaping, an outdoor patio. And then the applicant has proposed to split the building into more than one use. And this subject, or the subject site, it was part of the West Broadway Alive Small Area Plan and rezoning, both adopted in 2009 by the city council. So here is the site. Here's a photo of the site. It is currently under renovation, so these are older photos from Google. And so the applicant has proposed to rezone the site from C1 to C2 to allow a tobacco shop. Those are not allowed in C1 zoning, and the city council recently passed an ordinance that would prevent convenience stores from selling tobacco, which the applicant has cited as the reasoning for the rezoning. As staff was evaluating the application, we identified that dividing this particular building into two uses would also require a conditional use permit for a shopping center that is required due to the placement of the shared parking between the building and the street is what ends up requiring the CUP and leading to the shopping center definition. So here is a proposed floor plan of the retail convenience store, the 450-square-foot tobacco store, and then the restaurant. These were the similar plans that were submitted for PDR. And then here are the approved plans that went through as PDR. So you can see, as opposed to what is on the site already, there is some significant landscaping and screening, and there is also the addition of a patio, an overall reduction in previous surfaces. And so this site was, did receive its current zoning classification, 2009, as part of the West Broadway Alive rezoning study. That study looked at this and many other sites along West Broadway. This site specifically was rezoned to support commercial or mixed-use redevelopment, and staff has found that there has not been a significant change to the trend of the area since it received its current zoning classification. So this was the zoning prior to the West Broadway rezoning. You can see that there was more, there was C2 and C3S zoning in the area of the subject site. And then many of the properties were rezoned to OR2, and then many properties that had had the C2 zoning were downzoned to C1. And then the conditional use permit staff is supportive. The West Broadway Alive plan provides some guidance for supporting additional small-scale businesses in the area, encouraging facade improvements, and improving the business mix. And so assuming that the applicant does comply with the plan submitted for PDR, which shows the landscaping improvements and screening, staff is supportive of the conditional use permit. So staff recommendation is to deny the rezoning and to approve the conditional use permit. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell.
So Lindsay, just to confirm, the project as a whole, absent the tobacco uses, would be consistent with C1, would be allowed in C1?
Yes. So if the conditional use permit was approved, they could pursue the plans that they had submitted for PDR, which just showed dividing it into a convenience store and a restaurant, or they could potentially add, you know, a small use that's allowed in C1 zoning, which is a wide variety of uses.
And the convenience store currently sells tobacco, and, but there is an ordinance that will take effect.
Yes, the city council ordinance takes effect August of next year and will prohibit the sale of menthol tobacco in convenience stores citywide.
Got it.
But it will allow for the sale of menthol and flavored tobacco products in a tobacco-only, adult-only tobacco shop.
Which is only allowed in C2.
Which is only allowed in...
Correct. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions of staff? Commissioner Magrino.
Hi. Wasn't, I remember sometime in the past year or so, we definitely had a rezoning request along West Broadway, but I don't remember if we approved it or not. Do you have any information about rezoning requests in the past year or two along? I don't know if the address was exactly on it, but I think it was within the rezoning study area.
Sure. I'm not familiar with that.
I think it was about, it was within a block of West Broadway. Collection of that, it sounds like. All right. If there are no further questions of staff, I will open the public hearing, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, so please come to the microphone and state your name.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is George Barr. I'm here as a representative of Sarah Properties, and they also would like the opportunity to talk. Unfortunately, this will not go under your overhead. This is what the building has been look like when it's completed. This is kind of my third time before you. We're concentrating on revitalizing projects in North Minneapolis. We were in here a couple months ago on Tony's Automotive that burnt down. We're rebuilding that. You're probably familiar with the Brick's Grocery that burnt down on West Broadway. We're rebuilding that. In this particular case, we're taking a building that was built in 1956 as a car wash and has been operated recently as a grocery store. And the owners will indicate to you that they're investing a considerable amount of money in basically recycling this building into a new use. And we are currently under construction. The pictures that Lindsay showed you, if you drive by there in the next couple of days, canopy is down. We're basically putting in new openings for windows and getting the property graded for new concrete before the weather hits, so hopefully we'll get that all in. The property along West Broadway, as Lindsay indicated, I think most of it is C2 now. And this property was zoned C2 back five or six or seven years ago. I'm not privy to why it was downzoned to C1. I'm not privy to why it was downzoned to C one, but the explanation was given. So we're trying to get in here and to get it rezoned C two. In addition, to put the tobacco store in there, we also have the restaurant in there and the convenience store with the fuel pumps as it was before. But I think the owners will give you a history of what their businesses are now and why they think that this should be zoned C two. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we can move on to the next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sarah Hamad. I'm with eleven twenty West Broadway. I'm here on behalf of Sarah's Tobacco and Sarah Properties. Sarah Properties is the property owner of eleven twenty West Broadway. And with Sarah's Tobacco, we've been operating for about ten years now with five locations. Randy Hamad, who's the owner, has been a successful businessman for about twenty years now. And his partner, Nabil Aladimi, has been running the gas station for almost ten years now as well. The, both businesses, Broadway and Fremont and Sarah's Tobacco, have passed all of their compliance checks and have not sold to minors, which I know is a very big concern for an adult-only store. So that has been taken care of. The tobacco store will have a separate entrance and it is considered its own entity. In addition to cashiers and management, we would hire a private security company to ensure the safety of customers and all employees. The goal with this tobacco store is to bring all of the business back into the city that has left due to regulations and has gone into neighboring cities. I can give you an example with one of the stores we have in Columbia Heights. A lot of our customers have, the Minneapolis customers have shifted to us because of high taxes and the potential to not be able to buy menthol cigarettes in Minneapolis. So our goal is to make sure that the business stays in the city where I believe it should stay. I am also here to address any concerns that you have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? If there are none, we can move on to any other speakers. Thank you. And if there's anyone else who'd like to speak, yes, you can state your name and address.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Nabil. I was running the business for Broadway and Fremont as a gas stations and convenience stores and I try to maintain the business as responsible as I can, which I cooperate with the city, with the regulations and everything. And we try to work properly and keep all, you know, the minors out of, you know, the properties. And we've been really helpful with the cities. We meeting so many times with the councilor, we meet with the cities and they really appreciate. And we recommend it, you know, said many times, you guys, you send minors, we refuse to sell them, you know, underage, you know, tobacco. Is anything we can recommend to give us as like a certificate or anything, which is they took that to other considerations, who's been for many years. And I would like to show you, you know, I have been rewarded so many years and every year in this, so, which is as appreciation from the city. So I got like quite few, all the years. So that's sixteen and this one is fifteen and I got so far. And you guys, you can feel free, I can give you more copies as well as other one. So we try to develop this business and have been struggling for many, many years and I get really support from the neighborhood, from the cities to develop that buildings. And at that times, I wasn't be able to make it because of financially until we get to this point, because, you know, it costs so much to do that one. So until we get this point, unfortunately, you know, we get this banded menthol. If we did not get that one, it mean we've been losing a lot. So we don't want to lose that ones in our area and I really appreciate your considerations and thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mial Dragon and I'm actually, I came for a different purpose today. But I feel called to speak, my spiritual name is Zochiel Kali, which means flowering housewoman. And I am a First Nations ally and I work for Mishkigi Getagon, which is a jibway for medicine garden, which is in Phillips neighborhood. And that garden we steward sacred tobacco. And in this past year, working on this project, I have just heard from many First Nations people about their efforts to keep tobacco sacred. I am a pipe carrier with a Danza de Luna tradition. I'm in my ninth year of working between all nations and seeing the sacred power of being able to pray with a, with a plant and knowing that we are on indigenous lands. I just want to honor and just speak to the voice of the power of tobacco. And through the course of my prayers over this past decade, I would go to tobacco stores to buy tobacco to use to pray with. And as I've matured on my path, I've been receiving gifts and access to people who are keepers of the sacred medicines. So I also would like to say, I'm a child that grew up with my, in the womb with my mother smoking and in a home that there was constant smoke. And by the time I, I left home at fourteen, I could not smell tobacco for four years. And it was by the time I was eighteen that for the first time I could smell fresh air from what I was exposed to. I believe that commercial tobacco is a toxic substance and so I just urge you to not allow another source for that to come into our communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Randy Hamad. I'm the owner of wealth property at eleven twenty West Broadway and also owner of few tobacco stores in twenty city areas. I'd just like to tell you that I like to invest in North Minneapolis just to be updated of the city who needs so much businesses, people leaving the city because of the issue and regulations and still we gain business somewhere else. But if you keep the businesses in North Minneapolis, that would be great. I mean, people, we're not going to force people to stop smoking or smoking in all means, but we could help that if they don't have to go to West Broadway and Robin's there to buy their own cigarettes. They could stay in the city and pay for own cigarettes as long we are buying by the laws and regulation of the city. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And are there any other speakers? See no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have, let's see, just the two applications for us, the rezoning from C one to C two and then the conditional use permit for the shopping center in a C one district. Are there any questions? Would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell.
Sorry, I've got one more question for staff. So the, just about the ordinance, so the effect of the ordinance, if we remain, if this stays C one is to, is not to bar sale of tobacco, but it's just bar sale of menthol tobacco at the convenience store?
Correct. So in two thousand and fifteen, the city council passed an ordinance banning flavored tobacco from convenience stores and the menthol addition happened this year. And so that will, the menthol ban in convenience stores goes into effect August first. So then it will be the case that you can only buy flavored and menthol tobacco in adult-only tobacco stores as of August first next year.
Great, thanks.
Any further questions or would someone like to make a motion? All right, we have a motion and a second to move staff recommendation for both AMB, that is to deny the rezoning and to approve the conditional use permit. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
Just wanted to talk about this for a minute. I'll be supporting the motion. You know, I think the, this is an area that potentially can handle more density. And so I guess I focus my own thinking in the rezoning request on items three and four, findings three and four, which is whether the existing uses of the property, et cetera, et cetera, are compatible with the proposed zoning classification. I think the essence is that they are. And, and the only reason for the rezoning is to move around a very tailored, specific city ordinance that, you know, was, was put in place for a reason that the city council contemplated and passed. And so I think because, because of that, I think that it is, it is inappropriate to rezone for this reason. And I think that this, and that is upheld in these findings here, so.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? No further discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to follow staff recommendation, that is to deny the rezoning and to approve the conditional use permit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Begnan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Suizy?
Aye.
Reeland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item four, also concludes our meeting for today. We have committee the whole this Thursday and we are adjourned.